It's six thirty, I think we're ready to get started. Welcome everybody to the regular, well it's not regular meeting, this is a special time meeting for the April meeting of your city council for the city of Charlestown. It's April tenth, twenty twenty five, six thirty P M. We'll begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Everybody who came through the rally.
I am the official leader of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And I need Councilman Ronnie Blevins is going to lead our invocation for us.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for another day you've given us. Dear God, we ask Heavenly Father that you will be with us, Lord, through this, through every decision making process. Heavenly Father, Lord, that you'll always let us stay focused and do what's right for the ones that we represent. And we ask, dear Heavenly Father, Lord, that you'll just be with each and every one here tonight. Jesus, we thank you, Lord. Amen.
Thank you. We'll have our roll call, Bo Burtram.
Here.
Ronnie Blevins.
Here.
Shannon Elder.
Here.
Brian Hester.
Here.
Chuck Deaton.
Here.
The record shows that Mayor Hodges and Court Treasurer Donna Comer are present, as well as City Attorney Perry McCall. We have an agenda that's been provided. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ronnie Blevins. A second. Second by Shannon Elder. As a matter of order, although the items on the agenda are changing, I would like to make the recommendation that item D under new business, letter of recommendation disapproval for zoning map change at nine ten Thompson Street. They moved forward in the agenda, just following public comments. The reason for that is we have some people that have medical needs that prevent them from staying for very long, and I know that they're eager to know the outcome of that decision. So if that's okay with everyone?
Yep.
Okay. That said, I mean a vote to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You had your standing business, which includes the prior meeting minutes from both our regular meeting and the special call meeting from March twenty seventh, our current claims and our payroll allowance docket from February twenty fourth to March thirty. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ronnie Blevins.
I'm sorry.
Second by Chuck Deaton. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. That said, we do now have public comment, and I do believe we had several people signed up, so let me go over that. She's a Republican, being able to. Just a point of clarification, these public comments are for the general business on the agenda. There will be a special time within our agenda to hear public comment related to the Hidden River Valley public hearing as advertised. Our first person who signed up is Carolyn Henderson. Ms. Henderson, if you want to come forward. Just give us your address, and they have about three minutes.
Okay, we live at ten eleven Thompson Street and have it for thirty years. And as the years have gone on, there's been more and more traffic continually. And they finally put us a stop sign, but that doesn't do a lot of good sometimes. They run it a whole lot of times. So it's a very busy street. The people from Tunnel Mill use our street as a thoroughfare to get to three. And we have quite a few children on our street, and I think it's a safety hazard for them. And plus with all the apartments and the traffic, it's a very good, to me, it's a dangerous street for kids. And also, if they want to put all those apartments across the street over there, that's going to be five different families. The apartments, there will be, that will be four apartments that's joined. And you know each family has two cars. So that's going to be eight more cars right there parked just in the front on Thompson Street. And to me, that's going to look like a car lot. So I would like to see us keep it as a neighborhood, single family dwelling, and keep the look of the neighborhood that we have like a, for the hidden river.
Have Don Meyer. Ms. Meyer, just state your address.
Hi, I'm Don Meyer. I live at ten thirty five Thompson Street. I spoke with the planning meeting in opposition of the rezoning. I would really like for our neighborhood to maintain a single family home vibe, you know, in our, in our neighborhood. And I agree with Ms. Henderson also. So I just want to say I'm still in opposition to the rezoning, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And Willie O'Brady. Mr. Bradley again, just give us your address.
Where's that?
You could just brought her up.
Nine eleven Thompson Street. But yeah, just to add, kind of add on to what they said, we have a daughter, she's one and a half, and that's a lot of traffic. And we, we also walk on the street, there's a sidewalk, so with speeding cars and us walking, that's not always a good scenario for anybody. But yeah, I mean, we've, we've been here over ten years, and when, when we first moved here, I mean, I, I think I said it last meeting, but I absolutely heard a lot more sirens and ambulances and, so I know something's going on, and I was like, everybody can't be having that shit. I mean, maybe they can, but I know part of that is crime, so I, I just, you know, like they, they said, I mean, I just kind of want to keep it safe and, and, I have a new park and stuff, and, I don't know, I just add to the vibe. And I mean, they, they can have apartments, I mean, they do have apartments now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Those were all the votes signed up for public comment, and so having amended our agenda to move this item forward, I would entertain a motion on the letter of recommendation, which was for disapproval for the zoning map change at two ten Thompson Street. So we have a motion from Shannon Elder.
Second.
Second by Ronnie Blevins. At this time, we would have discussion from the council of the age. I do think we need to clarify, before you do your vote, whether or not this is a disapproval vote or an approval vote. Want to make that clear? The, the planning commission was recommending disapproval, so if you're voting to affirm that and you're voting to disapprove, just want to make sure. Is that correct, or?
I, I did do the last part.
Just that if they, if they, if they're doing a vote on this, they're voting to accept the disapproval recommendation from the planning commission.
Yes.
Therefore, the zoning does not cast.
That's correct.
Just want to be clear on that.
Yes.
Yes. So the motion on the floor is to accept the disfavorable recommendation from the planning commission and not approve the zoning change. Okay? Any questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So the zoning does not change, it stays the same.
Thank you.
And at this point, we'll jump back into our agenda, and I want, thank you for, the council for allowing that to move up, and there were some residents who had some health concerns, and I didn't want to have to make them wait the whole time for that.
And I want to thank those that came as well.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Happy to meet you.
Thank you all.
Hidden River people, I'm sorry, you're stuck here. All right, we'll move on through our agenda. I think I saw Mercedes sneak in, our legislative youth advisor, there she is. We'll call her up for our legislative youth advisor update.
Hi, sorry to look in.
That's okay.
There isn't much for this past month. Oh, by the way, Mr. Hester, I met with the chief of Clarksville, he told me to say aye. He is really nice. So first off, I want to start off with CH has hosted the Iron Chef competition right before spring break, and the student team of Morgan Fox, Ethan Matthews, Carter Stephens, and Samantha Richardson defeated the professional culinary team of Aramark. And then WPMQ radio and TV students joined the forces from the Business Academy to emcee and live story the event. And then CH has hosted a relay for life, for life last Friday in support of the American Cancer Society, and students walked and played around and played activities for pledge money to donate to the cause. Some students and clubs had tables with concessions, baked goods, and jewelry, we just want to thank everyone that participated. And then Mr. Chad Gilbert was selected as the Indiana District Five Athletic Director of the Year. Junior Anthony Fresh was selected as a junior all-star for the State of Indiana in basketball. And Junior Cameron Mitchell recently competed in the Nike Indoor Nationals track meet, where he placed seventh in the nation in the four hundred meter dash. He's currently ranked number one in the State of Indiana.
He's only a sophomore.
Wow.
And then the sales team will be hosting a community night at five P M. on May fifteenth with trucks and vendors for the home baseball and softball games and tennis match, and invites everyone to come out and support the Pirates, have some supper, and then just join in fellowship. And the sales team is also going to be hosting, or holding, sorry, an online silent basket auction the second week of May, where all proceeds go to the crusade for children, so fifty percent, and the sales scholarship, so the other fifty percent. And then lastly, the senior class night will be held May nineteenth at six P M., and graduation will be May twenty fourth at one. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I got to participate in the Iron Chef, which was tasty. It was, I'm like, wow, it was really good. They did this little breakfast sandwich for dinner, it was wonderful. So kudos to our students. Mayor's comments, just a couple of quick updates. As you know, I've been tracking Senate Bill One, which has a potential extremely negative impact on our budget. It continues to change. It has passed out of the House committees, or has the Senate now to the House, it passed out a House committee with some additional amendments that, some are goods, some are worse. One of the things the House had added was a complete phase out of the business personal property tax. That was, that was changed at the last minute, so there will still be some revenue. The reason that's significant for us here in Charlestown is that our, the spider tip that we have for Indiana American Water is all business personal property. So if they phase out business personal property, we would stand to lose about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year from our tip for it. So that was a significant, that could have been a potential hit that they have backed off of. They continue to discuss freezing the levy or very minor levy growth. My concerns are that as inflation continues to rise, our costs go up, and that this bill still does not affect the actual problem, which is with assessed value. It has nothing to do with tax rate. Our tax rate is actually lower today than it was pre-COVID. So it's not the tax rate that's the problem, it's the assessment process. So as you have relationships with our representatives or people in the state, I encourage you to make sure that you're staying in contact with them and tell them that we advocate for tax relief, that we wanted to actually solve the problem, not hurt our ability to provide services for our residents. One of the most disastrous effect right now in this bill is that it completely throws away with the growth levy appeal. For a community like ours that is growing so quickly, this is an incredibly hard hit to take, because if they tell us we can only grow by one or two percent, or three or four percent, but we're growing at eight or nine percent, that's levy loss, and that means that that doesn't help us hire more police officers to deal with the additional population, or hire more city laborers to plow the additional roads, or any way continue to provide the quality of service that we want to provide to our residents. So I hope that you're joining me and reaching out to them and advocate for real relief. We came through the flood quite well. Obviously, we are on higher ground, but I do want to make sure that you know that your staff in the city did a phenomenal job. They have been working very hard over the past, really, year and a half to work on the catch bases and develop a plan to clean those out on a more regular basis. And then since Abdi O'Dea took over the street department a few months ago, he has been practicing more, or doing more work as a street sweeper to keep that debris out, and it made a huge difference. If you compare the way our city handled this amount of water, so it's seven point three seven inches of rain measured at the wastewater plant. And if you look at the way overall the community handled that water, places that often flooded did not. And a large reason for that is the work that, that our street department and our sewer department jumped in to help with that as well. So your staff are working hard for you, and if you see them about, I hope that you'll compliment them on that. We have a few events coming up. We're finally out of our slow season and getting ready to kick things off. We did have to cancel the N L B camp on Saturday, we were concerned about the status of the fields, and we had to have a, there was a deadline where we either had to pay or we had to cancel, so we just kind of went on what the information we had at the time, we didn't cancel what it meant. The nineteenth, we have our big Easter event, and our park director Carrie emailed out a call for volunteers, so if you are around the morning of the nineteenth and want to help us throw fifteen thousand eggs into fields for children to come collect, we could definitely use the extra assistance with that, the family activities part. And then I hope you'll work your cylinders for the twenty sixth as well for the opening, official opening for the season at the depot. We have a special opening going on with that. I don't know if you've seen the garbage trucks driving around town, but we relaunched our kids drawing contests for the garbage trucks, and now every single one of our trucks, our regular trucks and our Lightning motors have art from Charlestown students from elementary middle and high school on them, and we will have them on display so that you can meet the artist, and they can come get pictures with their parents and families with those trucks at that event. So those are just some of the highlights of what's coming up. Are there any questions for me? All right, hearing none, questions for council comments?
I just want to give a shout out to the city for, well, we have a twenty, they opened up at A and E, and a lot of cities don't do this stuff. And I have been ride by a city that was pretty packed. There's a lot of people there, so it's, it's very nice that our city wants to take care of our residents in times of need like that, so I appreciate the city doing that.
Chief, we have about a hundred people in there.
Yeah, I'd say a hundred to a hundred and twenty.
And we'll continue to make that service. Carrie and Tiffany, our park staff go over before every event, and they make sure we follow water, they have blankets, flashlights, the whole thing, just in case power goes out. Our crew make sure the generator's ready to go, even if they're, they're a good problem.
Just kind of going off what you said with the city workers, I've talked to several of them, and police department was out all the time, I mean, I know fire department is their own entity, but they were out as well, and city workers were out everywhere, so I mean, I've talked to several of them, appreciate what they've done. I mean, it's, you don't get that much rain very often, you don't get those kind of winds very often, so I know we're doing construction at A and E, but it takes a lot to get it open, like Brian said, and we appreciate it all.
All right, so at this point, we're moving into the public hearing, but before we officially open the public hearing, I would like to invite Josh Hellman up with DC Develop, Dan Christie, Excavating Incorporated. He had, they have been doing a scoping period on this, and he has a presentation for you and for our residents who are here from Hidden River for the information. And after he concludes, we will open up the public hearing, and we'll be back.
Thank you, Josh Hellman with DC Develop and Dan Christie, Excavating. To give a little bit of background, last summer, early fall, the city advertised, put out an advertised R F P. for a proposed build, operate, transfer style procurement of a project for making drainage improvements in the Hidden River Valley subdivision. And a little background on that, before that, Harold Hart on behalf of Board Public Works and the city had done a, we'll call it a preliminary scope, that got the overall scope and idea of the project, which would be phase one. And so they put that project out for consideration, the Dan Christie and the DC Develop team responded, and today, that's what I'm presenting on, is phase one of that project. And so for all the residents that are here, after the meeting, I am glad to stay and talk about individual items or areas that may want to be discussed. And as the mayor has referenced in Board Works, it's phase one, which will be the downstream improvements, so that if improvements are made or budgeted for going into the neighborhood, this will allow for that to happen in future phases. DC Develop Engineering and Consulting Team, O H M., we partnered with O H M. to review and evaluate the engineering and drainage scope that Harold Hart had identified, and then Dan Christie and the excavating would be our construction partner. So the overall goal here is to create a positive drainage coming out of the subdivision. I know the residents behind me will know this area better than all of us as they live it and see it every day, but the concept was to get rid of some of the obstacles in the downstream area, to clear some of the pipes, to increase drainage from sinkholes that get out of the system once a sinkhole fills up, overflows into a ditch, and then drains out. But basically creating that positive system, and it's not a very complicated project, it's just, it's a big project in magnitude. So it's Indian Cave Court taking the sinkhole that's nearby, once it fills up, creating a positive outlet out, running it under the cul-de-sac, creating a new ditch line. We'll go to the next page. This is really the magnitude of it here at High Jackson, showing the existing culverts that were already in it. High Jackson has a rock check dam on the downstream side of it. What it appeared was those pipes, when they were originally installed years ago, had conflicts that kept them from going deeper. A rock check dam put in to hold, basically to avoid washout and erosion in the field. So Harold had scoped out to leave those pipes in place, to put one parallel pipe, but drop it low enough to hit grade that it could create positive drainage. But then the existing culvert pipes weren't going to be utilized until a massive, massive flood event came. So in scoping it, we went out, potholed utilities in the area, identified the conflicts that originally kept those pipes up at the high elevation, and said we really need to get those conflicts out of the way, drop those pipes to an elevation that can allow for free flow drainage. And then we met with Mr. Alguir, who's the farm owner there, talked about how we could create a positive drainage path going all the way down to Pleasant Run, putting in a few culverts along the way, basically opening up that drainage flow so that you don't have to pond back into the subdivision until the positive drainage goes out. Everybody's aware, I think, of the flooding that occurs in there. We wanted to also come in and make sure that we could route drainage around from the cul-de-sac, a few of the houses in that area, to encourage positive drainage. And ultimately, the scoping was to get to a guaranteed maximum price, which is how the build, operate, transfer works. So it's full transparency with the city, providing them all of the breakdown of everything that's in there. And this, so it goes into engineering, surveying, and easements, moab, demo, field engineering, layout, miscellaneous demolition of existing structures, erosion control, earthwork, storm sewer, restoration, traffic control, because we will be shutting High Jackson down for a period of time during that construction, just while those large pipes are being replaced, lowering the water main so we can get that conflict out of the way. We included a contingency in here. This is a guaranteed max price, so everything that comes to the city, guaranteed it won't exceed this. The contingency in there is only if an unidentified conflict comes up, otherwise that price stays with the city. And the easement contingency was a budget in there to work towards having easement preparation. And so final engineering is not done. This was a scoping period, we had to, at our risk, get engineering far enough along to provide a G M P. to the city. So after this week, in the next Board Works meeting, if it's formally approved, we'll finalize engineering. We will meet with property owners about securing easements after the easement plaits and descriptions are prepared. We'll meet with them, ask them for granting easements, set up a process for that, and then ultimately we'll begin construction. So the schedule, hitting just, these are like hitting weeks of when things are going to be done. Obviously, weather dependent, because it's a drainage improvement project, and you can't go into a drainage improvement project in heavy rain events. But this works through the summer so that restoration, by the time we get through engineering, easements, construction, restoration, that way come early fall, you're able to hit good restoration. And that's it. So it sounds like it's not a whole lot of description, but really, the, the importance of this project is resolving the downstream system and issues, so that in future phases, internal to the subdivision, they can be addressed. But you have to address downstream before you can address upstream.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think your culvert's going to be.
Let me grab the construction plans to confirm this for you. And so I do have a full set, or a draft set of construction plans, and after the meeting, I would be glad to meet with any of the property owners that would like to review and see exactly what we're doing. And Brian, they're, they are staying at the same size, I just don't recall the exact size of the pipes.
And why the cones are adequate?
Yes. And they are... Let me find it, I'll come back. Any other questions before public hearing?
So at this time, I will formally open the public hearing on the build, operate, transfer project for Hidden River Valley drainage issue. So if you would like to make public comment on this issue during the public hearing, this is your time. All you got to do is raise your hand.
Come forward.
Okay, come on up, state your name and address. It's not the Hunger Games, you can vong faster than that.
I'll kick it off. Brad Sherlin, my address is at A two fourteen, I take the River Trace, have you guys seen one there? We're incredibly impacted. I appreciate that you guys have came out and actually seen what we're dealing with. It's really scary when you have your family and everything, it's not just about flooding, right? It's not safety and everything in that area. I literally have a river running through my backyard in major rain, and it's, and it's scary. It's also unsanitary. There are, we're all, most of us are on septic fields out there, and the impacts that that could have downstream into our waterways is also something to consider. And just really hope that you guys approve this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Ryan, there were four sixty inch pipes. Brian, there were four 60-inch pipes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Other comments? Last call. All right, I will officially close the public hearing portion for the Hidden River Valley Drainage VOT project. And we will move through our agenda into old business and then into new business. Our first item of old business is the second reading of ordinance 2025 OR 5. This was the pretreatment ordinance for the wastewater plant. I would get a motion to, what's on the table? Motion by Brian Hester.
Second.
Second by Shannon Elder. Any additional questions on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Because I want to keep all of the Hidden River things together, if you're okay with it, I'd like to move item C4, the golf cart thing, and get that always on all the Hidden Rivers together. So this would be ordinance 2025 OR 6, a golf cart and utility task vehicle policy on first reading. We have seen an uptick in the number of golf carts that are driving around the city. And our own counsel, Shannon, reached out, the chief, and said that she would like to see something like that. Sherry, did you, Shannon, did you have anything you wanted to say about it?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. But Chief ran with it and he worked with Perry to get this ordinance put together. Essentially, it calls for safety protocol for wanting to make sure that golf carts and utility task vehicles are clearly marked and that they're being operated safely by drivers who are licensed to operate those vehicles. So that's what this ordinance does. It also does establish a process of inspection through the police department and a $25 annual fee for a license sticker that will go on the vehicle showing it has been inspected and licensed with the police department. And that fund will go to the police department into their own non-rivering fund to be used for training and other things that they need. So Chief, is there anything you wanted to say about this?
Anything you can add?
Yes.
No, just that we've had a lot of interest and a lot of requests. There's a lot of golf carts and UTVs both driving through the city. And we don't have an ordinance yet for it. So technically, according to state law, it's really not allowed yet until there's an ordinance by you guys allowing that, so.
I do have one question for you. I meant to ask you earlier. The county has their own tag for county rules. Just to clarify for everybody, even though you have a county, why don't you still leave it to the city?
Correct.
How do they get the vehicle inspected? Do they have to load this back in on a trailer and bring it to you, or do you go out to the site?
Yeah, so they can either, we can either do it at the site, their house, or wherever it may be in the city. Or if they want to bring it to station, they can do it that way as well, so.
So they just need to call in, give them a schedule of that, or call into the department and not be person, it's a department in San Jose?
Yeah, or stop, just stop in Monday through Friday, the floor, and talk with Mr. Sherry and go out to pay there. What we'll do is we'll issue a sticker, a registration. Also, we'll also give them a copy of the ordinance too, so that way they can keep it with them. So that's kind of our plans with it.
So do you have to hand the title, is there a title on the golf cart?
No, not per se. It's usually maybe like a serial number sheet or something like that. With the UTVs, there's usually titles, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Highway 3 passed New Washington Bank. Goes at 40 mile an hour. Some of these golf carts probably max at 20.
Yeah, so Market Street is, we would still consider that State Road 3 essentially. So it's still a state highway and ram a end dot. So you'd only be able to cross back and forth between the neighborhoods through there. You wouldn't be able to ride up and down Market.
That's probably the only street in the city that has over 30 mile an hour.
Yeah, other than 403 and 62 that you can't drive on anyway, so.
And this is for, to be clear, this is for local streets only, local roads only. So County Rosen and State Road are mine.
Well, State Road 3, even though a UTV will do 60, 70 mile an hour, they're still can't run up Highway 3, even though they keep up.
Right, right.
But it's still State Road.
Well, I was just making sure, because some people have road rage and appear.
Yeah, we definitely do not.
I cheated actually before the reading, so.
Yeah, we definitely do not want the carts on Market Street, 403 or 62, so.
That's my first subdivision also.
Yeah.
They have to, because I know our subdivision, some kids go crazy.
That's where the states are here too, that they have to be 16.
Yes, they have to be a licensed driver.
That's one thing, talking with everybody, that everybody really wanted, so.
A licensed driver or they gotta have a permit as long as the adult is, the same rules is for driving a car.
And then all the other state laws, of course, go with this, so.
Sounds good.
So I need a motion to approve. Motion made by Shannon Elder, second by Chuck Deaton. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We'll do second reading at the next meeting.
Save the transparency. All the funding will go towards police officer training, so, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for bearing with the council, letting me bring rooms to the agenda to make things flow a little differently. So the last three new business items are related to the Hidden River Valley Build, Operate, Transfer Agreement. The first is Resolution 2025 R7. This is the Hidden River Valley VOT resolution. This one formally awards the project to DC Develop and Chris Jenny Excavating and accepts the Board of Public Works recommendation to do so. So the Board of Public Works did meet and formally make this recommendation. It was properly advertised. We verified all of that. So this resolution is the next step in the process for the VOT process that will allow that formal recommendation to be made. So I need a motion.
Make a motion.
I have a motion by Chuck Deaton.
A second.
Second by Shannon Elder. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. It's a resolution. It only requires one reading. The second item is the Hidden River Valley VOT agreement. This is the actual agreement with Dan Christie, Excavating, DC Develop to perform the work in Hidden Springs Hall. The details, the Board of Public Works, I assume, will also look at this, Perry, or is this the final act?
Once the council, one thing that needs to be added to this is in page five, I'm in Ramon Cheaters, number three, the closing date on it before, which was not included as part of this. So we need to establish that. But once the council approves that, then it goes to DC Develop to, for their signature.
For their final, correct?
For their signature, and then that starts our timeline running. I would call the closing date the date that it's signed by DC.
Okay.
And I assume that's quick.
All right, so with that, entertaining the motion to approve the development agreement and send that to DC.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ronnie Bludens. I'll second. Second by Shannon Elder. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And then the last item is the funding mechanism of this. So $769,165 is the guaranteed maximum price. It will not be over that. It might be less. I talked to Donna and Brian Hester and I have met as well about funding this. And the recommendation, we were able to save $243,000 in local Rosen streets with caution and care from last year's budget. So I knew this project was coming. Wanted to fund it as best we could and try to cover as much as possible. So $243,000 come from our savings from local Rosen streets. And the remainder, $526,165, we need to come from the capital trust fund. That is the, the large money. I have asked Donna to prepare an ordinance for that, but only for first reading tonight because we need to advertise it. We have to advertise it before it can be appropriated. So if you choose to take action on this funding of this tonight, it's just the first reading. It will have to come back in May for the second and final reading after it's been advertised as required by state law. But that's what your ordinance, 2025 R7, is, is the additional appropriation from those two funds. $243,000 from local Rosen streets, $526,165 from the capital trust fund. And I have a motion to put that out.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Shannon Elder.
A second.
Second by Chuck Deaton. Questions, comments, discussion?
I do have one question. Josh, I know you had a schedule on there. And with this and the residents, the way they talked about, appoint getting your approval and we have a next reading and all that, what date are you going to plan to short?
So the next thing we would do is to finish, the next thing we would do is finish engineering, get a stamped set of plans and finalize easements and then go meet with the property owners we have to get easements from. So assuming everyone grants easements within probably 45 to 50 days, plus or minus.
Is that from now or is that from our next?
Probably, yeah, within the next meeting, from the next meeting.
Okay, so you're talking around 70, 70, 80 days on that period?
So what we would do is we'll meet with the residents at the beginning and talk about construction, give everybody a heads up so that they know what we're doing. So we don't catch them off guard, so if something doesn't happen where we're closing a street and they aren't aware of it, we'll have to go to the Board of Works to request a closure of High Jackson in advance of that, make sure it can be publicly advertised. But especially the property owners we're working across, we're going to meet with them before we do anything on the property.
The reason I ask, I mean, everybody knows, anybody sitting in this room, $759,000, I have a lot of money to spend real quick. And I just want to make sure that we're going to do this. We just want to move quick. And you all did a great job, but I just want to ask that, get away everybody, everybody knew.
The property owners that you have to get the easements from, there's no reason that they would not allow, like.
It's private property, no, I mean, it's private property rights. And everybody has the right to control what happens on their property. So we just have to be aware and diligent of that and respectful. So everything we're going to do is going to be to meet with them, request their approval, ask them to grant an easement, and then move on. But we won't go on someone's private property until they've granted easement unless there is existing easement. And so we've met with the two downstream. There's a couple a little further upstream we have not met with yet.
Thank you. Other questions? It's overdue, so I distinctly remember two years ago driving to, out through the neighborhood to pick up some friends for dinner and pulling into that cul-de-sac in my F-150, and it wasn't even that big of a rain. And I didn't want to, I was scared to drive through it. And that's when it really hit home for me. I knew it was a problem. We had already started looking into it, but that was when it really hit home to me. And since then, we've visited other property owners that are affected upstream, and it's still a problem, so it needs to be dealt with. All right, are there any other comments? Call for the vote on first only, first reading. We do have to advertise this for a period of 10 days prior to being able to take action on it. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous on the first reading. We'll bring it back. Our next meeting is Wednesday, May 7th at 6:30. So this will be on the agenda for second and final reading at that date. As well as the golf cart will be on for second reading as well. I think that's all I have, unless there's anything else I was gonna say.
Very thoughtful of you.
Absolutely. Happy to. Good luck with having you.
Thank you.
Did you already make a motion to adjourn?
Yes. I made a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Zippy. Do we have a second? Second by Shannon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Don't forget to sign, please.